Welcome to our board meeting. At this time, we'll call our meeting to order. Item number one is roll call. Ms. Jill.
Ms. Delaney.
Present.
Ms. Robin. Ms. Bluey.
Present.
Ms. Bouzoua.
Present.
Ms. Murphy. Ms. DeFrances.
Present.
Ms. Klein Peter.
Present.
Ms. Versa Jay.
Present.
Ms. Lewis Lambert.
Present.
Ms. Bro.
Present.
Ms. Chase Lambert.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Jill. Item number two is our implication. Mr. Tab Von Peter.
Y'all listen, bro. Bow your hands. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we discussed about it before. Bless our students, teachers, staff, and families that our decisions may serve their best interests and strengthens our school. Grant us patience, understanding, and unity as we work together. May everything we do be done with integrity and with the spirit of service. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Von Peter. Item number three is our pledge of allegiance. Mister Jay Lambert.
Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America. In the Republic of which stands the United States of America in its own court.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Item number four is our mission statement. Mister John DeFrances.
Thank you, Ms. Versa Jay. The mission of the Ascension Parish School System is to provide each student the high-quality education necessary to succeed in an ever-changing world.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is our approval minutes of August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Ms. Jill, I have one public comment card. Any others? Thank you. I'll need a motion. So, got a motion by Mr. Marty Bouzoua, second by Mr. Tab Von Peter. Do we have any further discussion? Any opposition? That motion carries. Alright, moving on to our meeting items. Number one is administrative introductions. Doctor Edith Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Versa Jay. And then we'll closer. Thank you, Ms. Versa Jay. I have the honor tonight to introduce four new administrators within our school system, and I will start with the principal of Apple, Kristen Ervin Holland. Come on down. She's a graduate of East Ascension High School, and she's a fifty-year educator, starting her teaching career out of state and then joining Ascension Parish in two thousand and thirteen. She earned her bachelor's from LSU and her master's in educational leadership from Southeastern. She is currently pursuing her doctorate at LSU in curriculum and instruction. She taught at Central Middle School and has served the district as an instructional coach, a master teacher, and administrative intern, an assistant principal at Apple, and now the current principal. Kristen's most cherished role is being mom to her five-year-old daughter Kirsten Jade. Ms. Kristen Holland.
Good evening. I first want to say, um, thank, thank you to God for his faithfulness. My life is truly a testament to the goodness of God, and I would not be here without his grace and his mercy. To my family and friends who are here tonight, thank you for your unwavering support. Um, I have my parents, my brother, my aunts, and my incredible work friends who have become like an extended family. Your love means everything to me. Um, and last but certainly not least, my sweet girl Kirsten Jade, who is my biggest cheerleader and my daily inspiration. To Dr. Walker and the board, thank you for this opportunity. I am truly honored and humbled to serve all of the programs, um, and all of our students at Apple, and I am committed to doing so with passion and integrity. I love that you do that. Uh, to the, to my director, Ms. Beth Tom Clay, and my supervisor, Ms. Rhonda Matthews. Thank you for your guidance and patience during my time as acting principal. Um, your support has been greatly appreciated, and I look forward to continuing to grow under your leadership. And lastly, I want to take a moment to acknowledge how special Central Middle School is to me. This is where my journey as an educator in Ascension Parish began, right here on the seventh grade hall. Um, and now nearly twelve years later, it feels incredibly meaningful to step into this new chapter of leadership in the very place where it also are. So, thank you.
Now, I'll introduce associate principal of Prairieville High School, Ms. Dyneska McZeeo. Dyneska earned her bachelor's in electrical engineering from Southern University. She has a master's in telecommunications and a master's in educational leadership. She began her teaching career in Saint James Parish and then moved to Ascension Parish in two thousand and nine. She has served as a teacher and a basketball coach, and she notes that she's the only female coach to win a state championship in basketball. She has been a mentor teacher, a master teacher, and assistant principal, and now she is the new associate principal. She is married to Ron, and they have three children, Dexter, Denalia, and Doron. I introduce Ms. Dyneska McZeeo.
Good evening, everyone. I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Walker and the board um, for allowing me this opportunity to serve as the associate principal of Prairieville High School. Um, truly, I am honored and humbled to serve alongside Principal Man Cuso um, and our administrative team, um, as we support students, we support teachers, um, and families, along with building a partnership with the community of Prairieville. And I know this didn't happen by chance. This is exactly where God placed me, and I have confirmation of that, and I'm excited, um, about this new opportunity. Um, and one thing, um, because Prairieville is still in its yet-put stage, I'm truly blessed that I get to help shape that culture, um, in the Prairieville area. Um, I want to take this time to just thank my family who have supported me over the years and also the other leaders that have poured into me, um, and allowed me to be standing here today. Um, it's already off to a great start, and I'm elated to serve with passion, dedication, um, compassion, um, to support our students. And it's amazing to work for a district that really values students, their, their, their success and excellence. So, I thank you guys again, um, and I'm looking forward to a great opportunity.
The new assistant principal of East Ascension High School, Carolini LeBlanc. Come on down. Carolini moved to Louisiana from Brazil in nineteen ninety-nine, and she spoke no English when she got here. But she went on to earn her bachelor's in Hispanic Studies from LSU, a master's of education and educational leadership from Southeastern. She began her teaching career in East Baton Rouge and joined our school district in two thousand and ten. She has been a teacher, a K O P leader, a team observer, and an instructional coach. She is married to Jacob LeBlanc, who teaches for us at San Juan High School, and he also coaches, and she has three children, Jonas Evers, Benjamin LeBlanc, and Brady LeBlanc. I introduce again, Ms. Carolini LeBlanc.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Walker, colleagues, and community members. It's an honor to stand before you today as the new assistant principal of East Ascension High School. And I want to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude to our district for continuously trusting me and investing in my growth as a leader. Every opportunity I've been given has prepared me for this moment, and I'm truly humbled to accept this position. My journey in education has always been guided by three passions: supporting teachers, integrating technology, embracing the power of language. As a former teacher-coach, I have walked side by side with teachers, helping them refine their practice and unlock their full potential in a classroom. As someone who values innovation, I've worked to bring technology into instruction in ways that enhance, not replace, great teaching. And as a speaker of world languages, I understand the doorways that open when students gain the gift of communication across cultures. These strengths connect directly to the heart of our school community. Uh, at East Ascension, we have three hundred and fifty-four Hispanic students enrolled, and one hundred and four of those are English-language learners, a number that continues to grow daily. I proudly share that I am a Latina, and I was once an ESL student myself, as Dr. Walker has mentioned, and I know the pressure it takes to learn a new language while navigating the challenges of fitting in socially. Still strong there. I feel a deep responsibility to serve, support, and advocate for our multilingual learners. There's truly no school like East Ascension High School. The diversity, the tradition, the school spirit, they're not just part of the culture here, they're part of who I am now. Every position I've held at this school has shaped me, challenged me, and made me better, not just as an educator, but as a human being. Tonight, I stand before you proud, grateful, and excited for the work ahead. Thank you for entrusting me with this opportunity to serve students, families, and teachers at East Ascension High School. Uh, I'm committing, I'm committed to honoring that trust every day. Thank you.
Assistant principal at East Ascension High School, Ms. Amanda Graves. Her bachelor's and her master's degree in educational leadership from Southern University. She began her teaching career in Giberville, where she taught health and physical education, studied skills, and she coached girls' basketball, volleyball, track, and softball. She joined Ascension Parish in two thousand and sixteen. She has served as a special education teacher, a lead teacher, a mentor teacher, and in two thousand and eighteen, she began, she became a special education coordinator. She has two sons, Christopher and Kendrell, and two grandsons, Cohen and Kalo. Again, I reintroduce Ms. Amanda Graves.
Good evening. I'm truly honored to stand before you today as, as assistant principal of East Ascension High School. Education is more than academics. It's about building a safe, supportive, and challenging environment where every student is empowered to thrive. At East Ascension, I look forward to collaborating with our dedicated staff, faculty, and families to inspire our students to reach their fullest potential. Together, we can continue to nurture and cultivate grounded excellence, respect, and resilience. My experience as both a teacher and coach have been instrumental in preparing me for this moment in my life. They have taught me the importance of leadership, patience, adaptability, and the power of building meaningful relationships with students and colleagues. These roles have shaped me, shaped my understanding of what it truly means to serve and support this school community. I would also like to take this moment to thank my family and friends for their unwavering support, especially my parents and my sons. Your love and courage have meant everything to me, and I'm especially appreciative of those who took time to be here with me tonight. Your presence means more than words can express. To the mentors and colleagues who have guided me along the way, thank you for believing in me and helping shape me into the leader I am today. As I begin this new chapter, I am excited, committed to upholding the proud tradition of East Ascension High School. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity, and I'm eager to serve our students and community with passion, purpose, and dedication. Thank you.
Alright, thank y'all. Congratulations to all our new leaders. Uh, moving on to item number two is recognition of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six Louisiana middle school teacher of the year. We have Doctor Muse to present.
Good evening, board. Thank you for taking this time to allow us the opportunity to recognize two winners in our district and recognize at the state level. If you notice that here's receipts, because they'll listen to your executive content, you'll see that for the past fifteen years, Ascension Parish has had at least one teacher or principal move forward in the state-level competition. It's really a tribute to the culture that we have, and you can hear those words as our new administrators bring to this evening as well. The first of our two that we are recognizing tonight is our state winner for middle school teacher of the year. So, that process begins at the school level, where the faculty votes to recognize a teacher of the year for the school. They then submit their material and application to our master teachers to select them. The district winner, who then moves on to the state level, and our winner for middle school teacher of the year has progressed through semifinalists and finalists, then the name, the state middle school teacher of the year. So, at this time, we'd like to call and recognize from the South Middle School, Sante Toshin. So, we have two trophies for our working, for our winners this evening. We have our finals trophy and one for the chief. Congratulations on being a finals, but you didn't stop there. You went on, you went on to win the division. So, middle school teacher of the year. This one's kind of.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Congratulations.
Way to go, Coach Jack.
So, this is the fourth year that the state has recognized a new teacher of the year. We understand that we have to continue to into education, and certainly Ascension continues to attract the best teachers into our district. The first time this, this award was presented at the state level, Ascension Parish won, and it's now the fourth time Ascension Parish has won again. So, very proud to recognize our state winner for new teacher of the year, Ms. Olivia Francois.
Just want to take a moment to say how truly proud I am of the administrators that are moving into their new roles, and I just cannot wait to see how they will impact our campuses. And I am so proud, this is the first time ever that Ascension Parish had two teachers of the year in our school district, and I think that deserves another round of applause. The most interesting piece about this for me is that both of our teachers of the year graduated from Ascension Public Schools. And so, you graduate from here, and you come back and you educate here. I think that's the highest form of praise that you can give to a school district. So, thank you again. I usually give an instruction that somebody has to pay for dinner tonight, right? But I got two different groups. So, the administrators who receive nice raises have to take their parents out to eat tonight. And then the teachers of the year, their families have to take them out to eat. Alright, so I'm gonna dismiss everyone, so you can go and have a wonderful night with your families. Thank you all for coming.
Alright, board, we're gonna continue on with our meeting. I'm finally asking y'all to step to the hall. Y'all can stay in the hall as long as you like. Alright, we'll continue on. Item number four is review and approve proposed changes to policy J G C P, administration of medication, and we have Doctor Muse and Ms. Keller here to talk to us.
Hello. So, good evening. Appreciate this opportunity for us to stand up and welcome something like you, right? So, the reason that this policy was left out uh, beating them with it last week, but last time I met the policy, is because no one's changed. It actually comes internally, uh, from your thought. The only change in this policy is on page ten. And so, you'll see the changes there, which striking the sentence. However, neither the Ascension Parish School Board nor each school should contain a stop epinephrine and does, and does not maintain a standing for a ball from the institution, official license to practice as a school's parent. Thanks for that. It's necessary to offer a reminder to those who are ready.
So, what's changed, and, um, about, due to the fact that in the seventeen four thirty-six point one, which is the law for medication administration, it states that a school district can, um, maintain stop epinephrine in the event a student has any type of life-threatening reaction, whether it is to a stain, food items, and we have never maintained a stop epinephrine. However, we're seeing a rise on allergic reactions just district-wide, and for the safety and health of the students, I presented this information myself and my nursing staff, um, to go ahead and stop an epinephrine in the school district. We were able to partner with, um, a pharmaceutical company, so all that stop epinephrine for the school district will be free of charge. Each school will receive four doses of epinephrine, um, to protect our students.
That's awesome.
Got a motion by Mr. Marty Bouzoua, second by Mr. Tab Von Peter. Do we have any other discussion on this item? Any opposition? Alright, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good stuff. Alright, moving on to number five, approval of the twenty twenty-five milligrade amendment, Mr. Shana Jackson. Good evening.
So, I want to read the resolution that's, um, in the only religions that are wanting to be admitted or announced to pay the bill service. The result of that, the following regulations, like you invited, that they on their two thousand and twenty-five cash flow on all property subject to taxation by secret, that's moving up. He wants that only be admitted on two thousand and five bound by four to two point one two mils, two thousand and nine bound to one point one oh mils, two thousand and sixteen bound to two point three five mils, two thousand and twenty bound to five point two eight mils, and two thousand and twenty four bound to two point one oh mil. The earlier result that the property district officials of a parish or station state of Lucasian being named that are hereby empowered and authorized and are ready to spread said taxes as herein the above set forth upon the assessment of the parish of, of said parish from the year of twenty twenty-five. Until the collection of the taxes filed for and on behalf of the tax authority according to law, and that the taxes here indeed shall be granted permanently and privileged on all property subject to taxation and here in set forth. And collection thereof shall be enforced for an amount provided by law. Before a portion of the resolution was read into the role was called and endowed here of the resolution was adopted by the following votes.
Just real quick, your document that's loaded up is not the same numbers as the one that you're calling out. I know you've went back and forth a couple of times to get this done, so I just. You go on the right one. Okay, give her a second.
Yeah, just a couple little points off on the video.
Oh, yeah. It is thirteen point two five. You should, there's eight point two five. That was the one I got on. Thirteen one two. It's not right loaded wire.
The, uh, one of the lettered in. These equal thirteen point five as well. They're just little bit of that. Like ours is two point two one, one point one five, two point three seven, five point three two, and two point two zero. That's the document we're looking at. Before we vote, we'll let Ms. Jill go on the right one.
Yeah, I think one to five, okay, two point. Yes, it was felt. Awesome. Over the double rope or something. Um, it's too long. Let me make sure we have all the stretch correct.
This is fifteen one.
Ms. Versa Jay, I like to make a motion and we table this and come back to it later in the meeting. Alright, we got a motion to table this. We'll come back to it later in our meeting. We got a second by Ms. Robin Pendelany. Do we have any further discussion on table on this item? Any opposition? Alright, the motion carries. We'll take one and come back to item number five. So, move on to our consent agenda, but before we do, we do have some speakers to come up, like the call of East Ascension F F A. And as they're coming up, I can tell the board they're gonna be speaking on agenda, I, since agenda item number fifteen. When you, y'all ready, y'all familiar?
Good afternoon. I'm Mattan Keating, the president.
I'm Hayden Egil, the former president.
Hello, we're happy to sit here.
And we are East Ascension F F A. F F A is a student-led organization dedicated to learning growth and leadership skills, teamwork, and communication through agriculture-related activities, as well as agriculture education, that can show a lot of science and ag-related competitions.
The ninety-eighth National Convention and Expo will be held in Indianapolis, Indiana from October twenty-seventh to November first.
At that show, we will be receiving the three-star chocolate awards on stage of how well-grounded that we champion are. This is the highest award we can receive at the show.
We will also be working with the units of the F F A over the United States, working on our leadership skills, working on like a unit service, only adding the value of our leadership skills.
Would you please throw a word to Indianapolis for the nine-year annual national.
Alright, thank y'all so much. Alright, board, I'll read the consent, and then we'll discuss, uh, number one, approval of policy A B C D A on expired term fulfillment. Number two, approval of policy B B C, school board committees. Number three, approval of policy I S C B, field trips and excursions. Number four, approval of policy J G C F, behavioral health support for students. Number five, approval of policy I F A, instructional material. Number five, approval of policy I F A, instructional materials. Number six, approval of policy I F B G A, acceptable use policy for technology, internet, and data USA, and network USA. Number seven, approval of policy J V D, student abscesses and excuses. Number eight, approval of policy J C D A F, bullying and hazing. Number nine, approval of policy J D E, expulsion. Number ten, approval of policy J G C E, child abuse. Number eleven, approval of monthly personnel report for July twenty twenty-five. Number twelve, approval of monthly head start services report, June and July twenty twenty-five. Number thirteen, approval of out-of-state field trip for Dust Town High School, N J R O T C, unit to attend the twenty twenty-five C P Mudroom, Gulfport, Mississippi, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Number fourteen, approval of out-of-state field trip for Dust Town High, N J R O T C cadets, attend the Pikaun Memorial High Brain Brawl Competition in Pikaun, Mississippi, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Number fifteen, approval of out-of-state field trip for East Ascension High FFA to attend the ninety-eighth Annual National FFA Convention and Expo to Indianapolis, Indiana, October twenty-seventh through November first, twenty twenty-five. Number sixteen, approval of out-of-state field trip for Dust Town High, Rio Kappa to attend the tour of civil rights movement, historical sites, Birmingham, Montgomery, and Selma, Alabama, January fifteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. Number seventeen, approval of out-of-state field trip for Prairie High Dance Team to attend the U D A National Dance Team Competition Orlando Porter, February fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-six. And lastly, number eighteen, approval of out-of-state field trip for Dust Town High, ninth through twelfth grade Rio Kappa to attend the Washington, D.C., Washington, D.C., February, in Washington, D.C., February fifteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-six. Do we need to remove any items from consent?
The motion will accept.
We got a motion for Mr. Tab Pon Peter to accept. We got a second by Miss Karen Bro. Do we have any further discussion on this item? Any opposition? That motion carries.
I want Indianapolis.
Thank y'all for coming to speak.
All right, Board, if I can get a motion to go back to uh, item.
Item number five.
Got a motion to go back to item number five. We got a second. Uh, motion by Mr. DeFranz and a second by Mr. Con Peter. Do we have any further discussions? Any opposition? All right, we are now back on meeting items. Number five, approval of the twenty twenty-five milligrade amendment, Mr. Shana Jackson, and we'll have her read it again.
Yeah, the reading is sorry, I'm printing out the wrong places. The one, the one, C G O was correct. I bring on the wrong one and all three. So sorry about that. Don't even give you the correct note. I'm gonna start over so we can have it on record.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Be it resolved that the following religions are hereby handed on to the twenty twenty-five tax road on all property subject to taxation by Ascension Parish School Board. The bridge that, that will be amended are as follows. Two thousand five bound to two point two one mils, two thousand nine bound one point one five mils, two thousand sixteen bound two point three seven mils, two thousand twenty-five five point three two mils, and two thousand twenty-four bound two point two zero mils. Be it further resolved that the proper administrative officials of the parish of Ascension, State of Louisiana, to be and they have hereby empowered, authorizing directly to spread said taxes and herein above set forth upon the assessment role of said parish for the year twenty twenty-five, and to make collection of taxman called for and on behalf of the tax authority according to the law. And that the taxes there herein, be it shall be confirmed and deemed and privileged on all property subject to taxation as herein set forth in collection thereof shall be forceful and amended provided by law. Before our resolution was read in full, the role was called and endowed here for, and the resolution was adopted by the following votes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shana. Board, I need a motion. You need a roll call. Yeah, we need a, a motion, a second, and a roll call.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the bond of twenty twenty. Just want to make sure we clear, is two point zero or two point?
Two point two.
It says point two, we said point zero.
Two point two zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Louis Lambert. Second by Miss Julie Blumen, and we'll need a roll call, Miss Julie.
Mr. Lammy, yes. Mr. Blumen, yes. Mr. Boujou.
Yes.
Mr. DeFranzis.
Yes.
Mr. Con Peter.
Yes.
Mr. Versa J.
Yes.
Mr. Louis Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Bro, yes. Mr. Jake Lambert.
Yes.
All right, that carries. Thank you. Oh, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, Board, we'll move on to decommitting information. Number one is report of committee meetings, Mr. Martin Boujou.
Yes. What's today we had, a budget committee, you today, it's a call. We had one item on the agenda was to receive the final report with twenty-three, twenty-four school audits. These ones were all here, so uh, the main thing they explained, y'all, the process. All the schools were all the things with twenty-three and twenty-four. We had ten schools with a perfectly audit, but do that twice a year, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boujou. Moving on to number two, scheduling of committee meetings. Do we have anyone that needs to schedule a meeting? All right, Mr. Lambert. The second meeting in September. How long you need hours? Uh, thirty minutes. You got that, Miss Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to each superintendent board comments. Number one, superintendent comments.
Thank you, Board. I just have, I'm here today. Um, we attended the Besse meeting, and we were recognized as number three in the state for top performance in devils and literacy for our school system. Um, it was an honor to be there. There were a lot of great districts and had uh, Ascension Parish these at the top of that list. Really was a problem for us. I want to thank um, this Francois, I want to thank this Frederick, Dr. Johnson, Miss Amy Dunn, and all of our literacy coaches and teachers, really push our students to be on level. We know that if we can move a student from third grade to fourth grade on level, they have a great chance of moving through our school system successfully. So all the things that we push literacy, we, we hope important thing for kids to be able to read and comprehend on their own. So I just want to thank them for all the work they do and just really highlight that Ascension is continuing to progress and move forward in a positive way. Um, I also want to highlight for the first time since they really discussed this at Besse, every fourth through eighth grade student in our district will be taking Spanish for thirty minutes a day, five rooms a week. And so this was something that, you know, you would push that and talk to us about this, Mr. DeFranzis, about really having our kids to engage in a foreign language, and we've been able to do that this year. So we're very proud moving forward, and our primary schools and middle schools were really able to work out schedules where students would be able to engage in a foreign language. And I also want to remind you that tomorrow, the Davisonville Chamber is putting on an event to talk about this economic growth in Ascension Parish. Um, Governor Landry will be speaking. Lunch will be served at eleven A.M. And then the start of program will start at twelve. It will be at the Lemon Center, and you all have been invited. I think some of you received personal invitations. Again, they would have come from the chamber, but I just wanted to. Yes, and then um, there's also an invitation for you to attend the Mayor Advisory Council induction ceremony on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth at sixty M at Davisonville City Hall. Remember, these are the people that the mayor pulls in. He finds out information about our school district, about Ascension Parish. There are students that really belong to us and offer advice in Davisonville. And of course, all board members um, are allowed to attend. I'll do my best to be there. And then last but not least, your employee exit reports, your contract renewal and employee contracts are all in um, board docs, and they are under the section in content. So please take a look at those exit reports. I read it from front to back. I read every comment that everybody made within our school system. There were a lot of great things that people have said when they exited our system, but there are some things that we still need to work on. And so we take those comments very seriously as we move forward as a school system. So please engage, and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wolf. We'll move on to number two, board member comments. Do we have any board member comments?
Mr. Versa, you have the.
Yes, sir.
Um, just wanted to inform the rest of everybody. I was contacted, I think it was on Monday of this week, by a cell phone caller, spoke to this little transipone. And they're trying to put up basically on the back row, the uh, carpool line that Dust Town. Had a concerned parent reached out to me, and I reached out to the car on uh, all of you familiar with, but that house that looks today right behind there is that block. The photographs that they had were all over that's before we built the new road. It's a buffer zone, they gun. Comes on the out part, you know. This is a crap, which is the, he presented some information stating the hazards of cell phone towers as far as radiation, radio frequency, this, that, the other. A T and T has the other side. Saw that documentation. Um, this thing was brought to the planning and zoning committee video Wednesday. They voted again. Um, the problem with that is this crap seems to think that they will be appealing. Um, if they do, you know, I don't know. Personally, this is not speaking as a board, you know. They say it's dangerous. They say it's not, if there's any chance that it's dangerous, we don't need it around our deals. So if this thing gets on appeal, I don't know if the board, if we want to get together and see if there's we want to make stands on it, you know, what we want to do. I don't know why they want to put this thing. Basically, it's on our property pretty much, you know, so. Just want to make you aware that may, they appeal. They have to appeal, I think, by Tuesday or next week. If they do, we'll give you more information. Let us come and give you a visit.
And so it's already just at the board's request, not the board we need just yet, we put a letter together and submit something. If you all choose for that to happen, I could be the catalyst to be, you know, to get our voice heard, if that's the case.
And this thing is a small footprint, and I understand this is a necessity. We have to have cell phone towers. But I don't think it's a necessity that it has to be right there. So uh, I think that you know, if the school comes out against it, it might give it a little, little pudding there, spoke a little about it, and he mentioned the, maybe let the residents know, maybe bring it to the uh, TV station, stuff like that. Just it may, hey, hopefully it goes the way, but it's not. I just want to make you aware.
I'll put something together, and then I'll let all board members see it finally.
Do we have any other board member comments? Uh, we'll just remind you, the training is ten days out, you know, before and back to training. I know it's not fun, but uh, we are required to do it as board members. So make sure you get that done. All right, we'll move on to closing of meeting adjournment. Motion by Mr. DeFranz, we got a.